So I'd like to call to order this study session for District 116 for October 3rd, 2017. You'll call please.
Member Carter?
Here.
Member Hall?
Here.
Member Patton?
Here.
Member Pulaski?
Here.
Member Fisher is here. Vice President Rollins Gay?
Here.
And President Demmett?
Here. We do have a quorum present. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to this evening's agenda?
No, there are none.
Do we have any citizen statements this evening? Anyone wish to address the board? Like to Lori, our recording secretary is doing double or triple duty tonight. She's actually running the cameras for us tonight, so folks at home can watch. Anyone wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have no call for an executive meeting after tonight's meeting. Motion to approve the agenda would be in order?
So moved.
Moved in second.
Moved in second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, sign, motion is carried. No commendations or recognitions this evening. We have one administrative briefing regarding our solar panel update.
Yes. So I'd just like to bring the board up to speed. If you remember, we had a presentation by individual representing straight-up solar about the possibility of partnering with the school district to put solar panels on Dr. Martin Luther King and Dr. Pressnell Williams Junior Elementary Schools. Those two schools were chosen at the time because of their, the age of their roofs. They were the newest roofs that we had. It, I will just let the board know that we did our due diligence with the attorneys and with the concept of leasing these panels and purchasing power through a multi-year power agreement, power purchase agreement plan. And our attorneys did throw up some cautionary, cautionary flags that made us rethink the process that we were approaching. If you know, if you've been following the, the work that the city has been doing with, with both straight-up solar and more recently Solar 2.0, the city has been working with a number of different solar companies to increase the solar energy collection and solar presence in, in the community. Our attorney said that the best way to approach this from a school district perspective is if we were to put out our own RFP and kind of create our own process for putting solar panels on district property. Rather than working through the city's plan, they, they basically cautioned and said, you know, that doing that without putting it out for a closed bid process could raise some concerns moving forward. And so, from an administrative viewpoint, we like the idea of moving towards solar and becoming, looking for ways to reduce our, our energy costs.
And our carbon footprint.
We think that we probably have support of our community along those lines. But the, the way our attorneys suggested we go about doing that is creating an RFP on our own and basically looking at requesting, requesting bids or proposals through an RFP process and through a closed bid process that the district controls rather than, rather than through a power purchase agreement. And so, that's where, that's where it currently stands. We are meeting with Scott Test from the City of Urbana to talk about the process that they used for putting together an RFP. And the city office, the city, the city building has agreed to help us develop our own RFP, and we can move forward in that way. But since we did have a presentation, since the board did take a little straw pull to move forward with solar, solar initiatives, I did just want to give you an update as to where that all stands right now because we're kind of putting a pause button on that project, but we will, we will move forward. And obviously, if we put out an RFP, the board will have an opportunity to review and obviously you'll have to approve that before any, any RFP is actually released. So I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Okay. Any board questions?
Well, I thought one of the things that, one of the messages I took away from that straight-up solar presentation was that timing was kind of a critical issue because of the nature of the federal tax credits and, you know, changes in policy that are going on in Washington. And so, moving quickly in order to maximize our, our gain was essential. And this sounds like this would really slow it down a lot.
So, because of the business model that Straight-Up Solar has, that is true, that the investors that they go through were very interested in capitalizing on the, on the tax credits. If we do it ourselves, obviously, the school district is not a taxing, is not, is not a entity that could benefit from those tax credits. And so, we would be looking at a, at a completely different model in terms of the investment structure there. And so, it wouldn't be something-
Potentially, but our bid could be involving tax credits with, through a private-
If, yeah, if, if the private entity that came in wanted to capitalize on the tax credits, that is a potential, a potential benefit that they could see. But I will say that the, that, that aspect of it, trying to think of a careful way to say this, but we didn't want to rush into something that could potentially open up the board for liability on the other end if they said, "We really needed to have that bid." And that was what our attorneys were cautioning us on.
Okay. That's not an open enough process.
Correct.
The way we do most of our business.
Correct.
I seem to say. I mean, is this justified by other school districts? I know they said they had worked with other school districts. I can't remember if in the state of Illinois or not.
Not in the state of Illinois. And that was part of the issue was we would have been the first school district in the state of Illinois to enter into such a power purchase agreement for a solar initiative. And so, they, they had quite a bit of work in Missouri and in other states, especially in the West. But different, different structures, different school codes, and different requirements for bidding such public projects.
All right. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on. We're now ready for our study topics. And this evening, our first study topic is the Urbana Neighborhood Connections Center.
Yes. So I would like to bring up Janice Mitchell, who is the founder and director of the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center. And she's also a parent liaison for the district. She does a nice job of keeping those two things separate. But also, our students and our families benefit from that strong connection and our strong partnership with the Neighborhood Connection Center. Last spring, when she and I were talking about a presentation about the work that liaisons do, I said, you know, "It's really important to understand that the partnership that we have with the Connections Center also benefits our students and families a great deal." And so, I will turn it over to you, Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you very much. You've been a great one. And thank you to all of our board of education and our municipal leaders for our district. As everyone knows, I am Janice Mitchell, and I serve two roles because I am a district parent community outreach liaison, which I have been in the position now for a little over twelve years. And I like to see and refer to the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center as just an extension of my work base. Actually, the Urban Neighborhood Connection Center, I sat in this year in Warrenville some, almost eight years ago. And just talked about the vision and the work we had with the housing authority in Champaign County, who at that point had said to me, "Okay, after bothering the director for about eight months, he finally said, 'Okay, we're gonna let you use that building, but I don't think there's anything we can do with the building. There's just a lot of stuff in it.'" And sure enough, we ended up getting the building. I realized, "Ooh, now that I have this building, I didn't have any money." So I really didn't know. And from that point though, we saw the vision, we cleaned the building, and when I said we need a lot of community, family, friends, our children, the district, those kids who were helping me back then, I have kids, they are now in college.
Did I not? Okay, they are now away in college.
I bet.
And, and doing great. As I said in the beginning, just the presentation, when I say that I really do think our school district, I always list the school district as our number-one investor in the sense of the support that we've received through these years. And it will be eight years come January 19th. Through the years from our district administrators, our former superintendent, Dr. Williams, our current superintendent, Dr. Owen, our board members, our administration, the students, the principals, I cannot really explain the amount of support that we get. And when I say that, as we move forward, you will hear some of the, what I like to say, testimonies through the years in terms of how the school district has helped our center continue to develop and grow. I am one who always reflect on the beginnings, the small beginnings as we say them. But it wasn't small for me because it was a lot of work. And even till today, I may leave the district at 2:30, 3 o'clock, and if anyone passed that building at 1401 East Main Street, sometimes it may be 12 o'clock at night, and I'm in there probably finishing up reports like I did last night. But I do think about Carol, Carol Baker would never even know how often I do think back to just having a listening ear. And I know she knew I was green at a lot of stuff, but between you, Linda Corbett, it was just being able to listen and, and be able to say, "Yeah, you know, I know you can get this, you can do this." And, and that's what I needed. And believe you me, through these years, to sum up some of those things, our food services, I sat and talked with you about early on, I could get it done now with my eyes closed now. It's a, it's a long process, but I appreciate just that support and encouragement because as all of you know, working with, with local government is one thing, but when we start talking to state and federal, it, it's a lot. And I do appreciate Linda Gibbons, she's not here, but just the countless number of hours that Linda Gibbons has given to encouraging me, to helping me understand different, you know, just functions and, or roles in terms of just the whole grassroots. And when I say grassroots, I do mean grassroots. And grassroots to the point that if I wrote the book, I will be putting everything backwards in terms of telling people how not to get it done, but it can still be successful. So with that in mind, what I'd like to start by saying is just that Urbana Neighborhood Connections Center, where we're located at 1401 East Main Street here, most of you know where's, where was Solo Cup, DART. We are kind of between the Solo Cup and the VFW, and it wa, it was Harley-Davidson building, and we cleaned that building. We started with having approximately seven students when we opened our doors almost eight years ago. Seven students for about the first almost seven months. And now, we are at a point where currently, we are serving about 60 kids at the Main Street site. And as you can see in the, all our flyers I put together, we opened a second site in March of this year, partnering with the IMC. And so, we have our middle school students down there, and on a daily attendance, we have right about 20 middle school students. So we've grown a lot during our college and career readiness program, which you have the flyer. All of the pictures that you see up front here, our college and career readiness program, we started that program with no money. This was a pilot. And I took my lunchtime, my lunchtime for almost a month, and I went to Urbana High School. And with the permission and the support of the principals, about four, five years ago, I was able to meet with every African-American student that was a senior that year so that I can find out, "What, what are you gonna do after graduation?" Now, some may wonder, "Well, why'd you just meet with African-American students?" Well, we all know that we, we still have some work to do, and we do have a group of students that we want to make certain that we are kind of holding hands, guiding, and giving that little extra too. After realizing some of those things that were needed, I set out and I made certain if they were not accepted into a college, we made certain that the applications for Parkland College, some of the other smaller colleges were at least available and they understood the process. The FAFSA process, that's come a long ways. Not that our high school does not offer, because I want to, to make certain. I work close with our high school counselors. Our high school offered these services. And we all know that there are those who, for whatever the reason, sometimes just does not make use of the services. But what I can tell you are the students that you see up here in our college and career program, we meet sometimes two to three weekends. So my work is not just during the week. We meet on weekends. Last weekend, I think we had about 13 students that went on the tour, open house at ISU. This coming Monday, we're out of school, but we have about 18 students who are going to EIU with us because they're having an open house and a free admissions, the application process. So we've taken students as far as LSU, Southern in Baton Rouge, Jackson State, so, you know, and, and of course, our statewide schools. So the college and career readiness program, we've gone from our first year or so only looking at seniors to, we, after the second year, we added juniors. And this year, we had sophomores, juniors, and seniors. And next year, we are gonna open it to freshmen so we can have our own in-house continuum of support in terms of community support for our students. We have, not just with our college and career readiness program, we have our after-school. After-school, our students are able to come in their kindergarten and right now through middle school. We may have one or two high school students, but you know, for the most part, high school students are either in sports or they're trying to get a job. So they really don't look for a place just to go after school. The great thing about the UNCC is that those students are not just there to hang out. We are not a drop-in center. The students are held accountable for their schoolwork because academics is first, is priority. Our kindergarten through fifth grade, they know the routine. They get off the bus, they open their book bags. That's just it. Communication with the teachers pretty much let us know, "What's the homework folder?" So we have volunteers, tutors from the University of Illinois, from Parkland, Community. Beth is actually going to talk about some that are here right now that are from our school district. But we have a lot of support that we give to our students after the bell rings. We have some of our parents that are here that are going to speak to some of the support. And we also have some of our students, from our elementary students to some of our high school students, to one of our students that have come from the time we opened the doors, and now she is a freshman at the University of Illinois. So with that in mind, I'll sum up. We also have our Hope Challenge Program, which is more of our socio-emotional, reading and relating. At least once or twice a week, the kids get the opportunity. We selected the books, they get an opportunity to read, but we talk about and relate it to real-life situations for them. On a daily basis, our students, whether it's the summer or after-school, we do prepare a nutritious meal every day before going home. We do have a licensed kitchen that was definitely, and I know Carol smiled because that was a three-year work in progress, and I will tell you, I did everything backwards, but we got it right. And we do have a fully equipped commercial kitchen, and we are, we do have a public health permit. So we, we're right where we need to be. And we did not do that alone because we had the help of the school district when we had renovations to the high school, to a couple of the other, King School. So I'd like to say that we do provide a wholesome of academic, social, emotional, and recreational activities. At this time, because we have several members of our board of directors for UNCC that are here, I'd like for each one of them to just stand, if you can, and just, I'll, you all have a list of our board of directors in your packet. At this time though, Dr. Francis, who is our board president, is going to come. Following Dr. Francis's presentation as the board president, I am going to ask Beth Hand, who will talk about our intensive literacy program, and then we're going to bring up some of our students and our parents. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Francis E. Hidrika. Everybody just calls me Dr. Francis. I'm the owner of the past program over by the mall, and I'm the president of the board for UNCC. And I'd like to thank Mrs. Dawn Owens and all the rest of board members for all your support, especially for allowing this woman to do what she does. And like she just said, her day never finishes, she just continues on and on. The program I run is helping medical students and physicians find their way through the licensure exams. And I always have a message for every student. I always say, "I can't teach you to have a heart, but I can teach you the information you need after you have a heart." So that means either you care or you don't care. So that means either you care about taking care of patients or you don't care about taking care of patients. But what, if you truly do care about taking care of patients, then I will teach you the information you need in order to be able to do that. I met Ms. Mitchell at the beginning, and she told me about her vision for the UNCC. And I thought, "Okay, if this is what you want to do," I was very impressed by the vision. My thought was, if you provide students, I mean, children, a very positive environment and you feed them positive reinforcement every day, and you keep letting them know that they can accomplish very positive things, well, folks, they're going to flourish. I truly believe in that. And I've always been a staunch supporter of any program that does that. But in the beginning, I was amazed because all of a sudden, she has a building. I said, "Okay, how did this happen?" Then I, I remember going by to see the building, and there's nothing but junk in the building. I said, "I don't know how she's gonna do this." Next time I came back, it's painted. All the junk is gone. I had no idea how that happened. She mobilized enough people to get that done. And we provided some furniture along with some other companies, and next you know, we have a, a fully furnished center for the children to thrive in. And all the board members, I know I can speak for the board members, we truly believe in her vision and what she is doing for these children. In the eight years that I've been involved, I mean, there's only been one year that one of the seniors did not graduate on time. Every senior that has been involved in UNCC has graduated on time and gone on to college. That's what amazes me, folks, because I always think, even if it's not my child, it's somebody else's child. And I want that child to be a very positive and productive member of society. And this is how you do it. You gotta catch them while they're young and then program with, program them with positivity, and what you'll have in the end is a positive life that is very productive and does amazing things. And that's why the vision has always been to help students, what is the word? Recognize their potential, develop their potential, and go on to meet their potential, but never, never define their potential. And that's what the UNCC has been about. And we, as a proud board members, have been very happy to back her in all that she's doing. We support her vision, but we don't control her vision. She does it somehow, she gets it all done, and we're happy to be a part of it. Thank you very much.
I too want to thank the board members for all the support that they've given for the Urbana Neighborhood Connections Center. And I will also reiterate, Janice Mitchell is just incredible, the amount of work that she does, the amount of passion that she has for her work is wonderful. Many of us have done some tutoring at the center, and the academic work that we have has morphed into more specific services for them. Carolyn Jenkins continues to provide math tutoring. I've provided some reading and math tutoring over time. We have partnered with the reading group at times. It kind of depends upon what grant we're able to snare up and what the directions are for that one. And we started working with, under the Eastern, the Community Foundation Program, right? And we started working with some of our high school students to tutor their classrooms. Eventually, we started being able to hire some teaching assistants that I used to work with when I was in special education in the district. So we have Joe Young, who's a current teaching assistant, working with our students. And we also have two people I want to introduce, Linda Jacobson and Debbie Mesmer, who are former employees, teaching assistants at the, at the Urbana School District. Linda continues to be a substitute teacher in the elementary buildings and at early childhood also. They provide wonderful services. What I decided to do is to just show you some pictures because pictures tell a thousand words. When Janice was talking about the connections that she has with parents, let me get this started first. When she was talking about the connections that she has with teachers and principals and parents, it's very evident that our current program is called the Intensive Literacy and Homework Help Assistance Program. So I have assessed all the students. We have about 60, 65 K-5 students, and we figured out the ones that need the most help. We also rely on the other workers that work for some referrals. Most of them are in academic needs, some are also socio-emotional needs. And the teachers have been so supportive, principals have been so supportive. There's some students that need more communication. There was a student that I had last year that I would literally send pictures of the work he did back and forth. The teachers would let me know what computer programming they might be using. They would send me materials. We continued to work with a middle school student for a while last year too to help with that transition. So here is one of the students. This student was referred by Chris Vowles from the Early Childhood Program. She said the student just didn't attend early childhood consistently enough before going into kindergarten, and she really wanted to have some support. So we picked him up that summer and worked with him. And he, by the time fall came around, he was definitely ready. So we have, again, K-5, just depends upon their need. There's Mrs. Mesmer in the back. Another teaching assistant that we're working with is Joe Young, who is a current teaching assistant at the district too. We will, teachers will let us know, and, and I'll sit in on parent-teacher conferences if needed, or they'll let me have separate conferences for them, sometimes with the parent, always with parent permission. The emails that we send back and forth or the texts that we send, whatever works best, is always copied with the parents, and the parents are also very much involved. We're a team process. And so, the upper one shows some work that a teacher wanted a student to do, and then we can implement that within their daily work, in their work that we do. It's twice a week that we meet. This is some of the work that we have text back and forth. And, and notes to the teachers, communications, they've been so helpful. And Janice is very supportive. We'll talk back and forth, and when a student needs some extra attention, she's always right there for them. Some of our high school assistants that we've used, I think it's been very helpful for them not only work-wise, but even academically. And the relationship, I mean, that's the key, like Dr. Francis said, it's building relationships, it's being supportive with these students, it's letting parents know that they can succeed, that we can work together. We just, we're spoiled in that we don't have a lot of students there, and we can do, we have that time to follow up and to do what's needed for the student and to support the teacher. We can use whatever materials we need. The school district has been so helpful with giving us materials together. We've worked through the Eureka Math Program, and a lot of the main, we call the students in the main room that I work, I'll support that also. And that's, many of their questions is, "How does this work?" And so, and, you know, we had some new students this fall start with us. Several of them were fourth grade, one was third grade, and they, they walk back there and they sit down, and they're like, "Are you kidding me? We just had six hours of school, and you expect us to sit for two more hours?" And by the third or fourth session, they're just all ready, they're gung-ho. Not always granted, but they see a value in it. And the parents will come back and talk to us, and they see the value, they see the success that's coming. Last summer, we also worked on the garden at Urbana Neighborhood on the south side of the building, had the students help prep it and plant it, and we had good harvest too. I'm sure we wouldn't have had that this summer if we had done it. Again, we've worked with some other community members. So those are some faces to put onto that. And again, Janice is just wonderful about mobilizing people, about finding the services and working together with the community. And the community is just very supportive of it. So thank you, and I hope you continue to support her.
Okay. And at this time, we are going to hear from some of our students and our parents. And we first have Ms. Patisha Pettigrew, who is a parent of several students in our district. And we first have Ms. Patricia Pettigrew, who is a parent of several students in our district.
Good evening. Excuse me. So as Mrs. Mitchell said, I do have several students who go to the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center. I also have a preschooler who can't wait till he's in kindergarten, so he can go to the center as well. My students have been going to the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center since one of them was in first grade and the other was in third grade. And the center, what it does for my family is prevents my kids from being latchkey kids. And I'm sorry to get emotional. But I will not leave Urbana as far as a living place until my kids are not at that age anymore for the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center. What Mrs. Mitchell and her staff provide at the center is a hope for our kids. A hope that they have somewhere safe to go. A hope for us parents who work hard and don't get off until 5:30, 6 o'clock, somewhere that they know, you know that your kid can go and they can be taken care of in the way that you would take care of them. Mrs. Mitchell spoke about the meal that's provided. And I cannot speak or thank her enough that the kids get a meal before they come home. And not that I'm not feeding them dinner, but when we walk in the door and it's already 6 o'clock, and they're mowing me down because they're starving before I can put my bag down or ask them anything about their day, to know that she's fed them something, that I get those extra minutes, is priceless. To know in that same evening where I only have a couple of hours before it's bedtime, and I always tease to beat them, bathe them, and put them to bed, that the homework is done, and all I have to do is review it and get to spend some quality time with my kids. So I get emotional when I talk about and think about the value that the center provides to the Urbana community at a price that parents can afford. So I could go on and on and on, but I am very thankful for what the Urbana Neighborhood Connections Center provides to my family. Thank you.
My name is Selma, and I am, I go to Leo, and I am in second grade. And what I like about the program is that we play on the computers and we play outside, and we eat lunch. And for summer, we eat snack and lunch. And I like the program because we do homework.
My name is, my name is Robert King, and I go to the IMC, which is the teen part of the center. I go to the Urbana Middle School. And one thing I like about the IMC and the middle school part is that there's a lot more open space than the other place.
Okay, so, so thank you, board, for letting us share. I think, as folks have said, Ms. Mitchell's pretty awesome. I just wanted to say something. My name is Robert King as well, and I'm one of the parents, right back in the back there, of these two. So Ms. Mitchell and the UNC program has been an amazing community resource. It's provided a space for me and my family to be both connected to the Urbana community and gain access to an amazing academic champion. I think she just really has an engine that just goes for education with our kids. The program has helped our family get our oldest son, who I believe is in this picture here, off to college. Oh, in this one, yes. So I think we have been pushing, but it just gave another space and someone in the community that's really pushing and saying, hey, you can do this, and just being a support for him, and provided more other positive students that were also part of that program as well, which was also really, really pretty impressive to see. Also, our youngest is here, she's in the program. Robert is our youngest son, and then my little brother is also in the program. He's in the current college prep group, or college placement group. And he just went to the ISU visit, came back really energized, ready to go. He's actually tonight studying in the library. I know my wife has had something to do with that, kind of spurring him along, but I definitely feel like the IMC has helped with that as well, or Ms. Mitchell. Two other things I wanted to say, I'm also thankful that Ms. Mitchell decided to partner with us at the IMC, the Independent Media Center here in Urbana, to expand the middle and that component of the program. I feel like that's a great use, again, of her community resources and trying to network with folks. And I think she's done a great job with that. And then finally, while I recognize raising kids can be a huge challenge, I just feels really positive to have, for me, you know, we're seeing a positive African-American role model in our community step forward and really try to fill in the gap for a lot of us in terms of the support. You just never know what you need in terms of support. But to be able to know that our kids are gonna go to this space and be around really positive people that have, like, really positive images that they're placing around our kids is super support. So, thank you all for supporting this program, and let's keep it rolling. Thank you. Okay.
Hello.
Hello, my name is Taylan Martin, and I am a student at Urbana High School. And this year, I'm gonna be a junior graduate. And I started in the program fifth grade, fifth grade, and I've been there ever since high school. And in the summer, it was like two years ago?
Maybe.
Maybe, one of those. So I was out looking for a job because I was tired of being at home, and I didn't want to just sit around, do nothing for the summer. So I went, and I went to Ms. Mitchell, and I asked her, well, I didn't ask, I asked her for an application, and then that's when she gave me the application, and I filled it out, next day, turned it in, and she told me the date for our interview. And so I was sitting there at the interview, and we interviewed, and then that's when she called me a couple days after, and she was like, well, you got the job, dah 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 dah, this, that, and the other. I'm, okay, yay. So then that's when, I have been working there ever since I was
Fifteen.
Fifteen. And now I'm sixteen, and and so so
Do you like working there?
Yes, I love working there because I have a bond with the kids, like, I love to bond with kids. And like, being, like, being with them, it makes me, like, not want to stop working there because, like, I like to create new bonds with people, and I like to know more about, like, how, like, they're, like, how they're feeling and stuff like that. And I think personally, why I like, like, working with kids is because, like, when I go off to college, I want to be either like a nurse or a childhood educator, like, an early childhood educator. And this gives me experience to get me in the field, kind of, sort of. Yeah, and also, I'm in the College Readiness Program. I started last year, last year. And the college visits, the college visits, they're good because, like, some of, like, the colleges that we go to, I apply for there, they send me, like, it, like, the invites to campus, like, to come there and tour the campus and stuff. And I think that it's a really good opportunity because not many people get the opportunity to experience and go on college tours and do things to help them prepare and get ready to go off to college.
I'm Akila Miller, I'm Taylan's mom. I actually have four children that went through this program. Three of them, of course, are teenagers. I think my son quit coming eighth grade year, you know, typical boy. He's too good for that. But, you know, he'll still come, you know, if he picks up his sisters, whatnot, he'll come in and speak. I think the program is great. We originally came from Champaign. We were Champaign students, you know. But it just so happened that it lucked up, we moved to Urbana. We've been in the Urbana area for about ten years now. So for the past six years, my kids have been involved with the program. I'm a single parent, I work two jobs. So, you know, trying to be everywhere at once just doesn't happen. Like the one parent said, it is a blessing to know that your child is safe. You know, me being a working mom, most kids go home after school. You're wrecking your brain trying to figure out where your kids are. Just the fact that I know where all four of my kids are on a daily basis is a little less stressful. My little boy, he actually started before kindergarten. He's now in kindergarten. But he's been wanting to go, wanting to go, wanting to go. We let him go this summer, you know, he's adjusting. But he doesn't think that he's a kindergartner, for some reason. He'd tell you, he's ten, but he's five. But he likes it, you know, it gives him, like, even if he's having a bad day in school, it gives him something to look forward to after school. Like, oh, I'm going, you know, I can't stay after school, I can't get in trouble, I gotta go to the after-school program. So, you know, I'm happy, I'm thankful, you know, the college prep program, I probably wouldn't be able to do this on my own. I'm ready to pull my hair out, I got two graduating. I'm not ready, you know, I'm just not ready. But this program has been wonderful, and I don't know what I would do without it. So, we have been in Urbana and don't plan on leaving unless we're leaving the state. But yeah, thank you.
Hi. Okay. Okay, so my name is Arlana Webb. I go to University of Illinois. I have been at the center, I believe, fifth grade, fifth or sixth grade. I was actually a student, so I was not expected to work with kids. When I went in there, like, I was like, these kids are bad, but they're not. I'm like, no, not kids, I can't do it. But, like, the daily, what we did was academics in the morning, and reading, math, computers, and all that good jazz. Then we had free time, and I liked that it was other students that were my age that were able, I could able to bond with and things of that sort. And when I got to high school, I asked Mitchell if I can work there. And I started working, and I like it, and I think I was in ninth grade, ninth or tenth grade. And I'm still working there, and I'm a freshman in college, so I like it. Mainly because I do have a connection with the kids. One of the kids that I first met, she was in kindergarten, and now she's in, like, fourth or fifth grade. So it's like, oh my God, you're taller than me, and I can't deal. And I'm like, you guys are growing, and you guys are being, they're being responsible. And I see myself as a role model because they come to me, a lot of them come to me for advice. So if they're having something, you know, trouble with their school or with the kids at the school, they come to me for advice, come to me for help. So I, I'm a staff, but I'm also a leader to them, and I'm also someone that listens to them, has all ears for them. And yeah, during me working there, during, like, my junior year, I went to the College Career Readiness Program. And there we did FAFSA, Parkland applications, scholarships. I wrote my essay for U of I, and then it was some editors that came in and helped me and needed if I needed to tweak it, or if that, you know, didn't sound right. And I guess it sounded right because I'm in U of I. But it gave me, I actually, like, opened my eyes to different schools because, you know, I just can't say, like, oh, I want to go to this school, but I've never been there. So we went to visit, and I liked Louisiana State and Jackson State. But U of I just stuck out to me, I guess because I'm from here, and, you know, I don't know. But, so, yeah, the center's helped me a lot. It helped me with, like, communication skills, leadership skills, everything in the book, so. And my picture is up here, it's very nice. Yes.
Hi, I'm Latonya Webb, I'm her mother. I have three daughters, they're each stair-step, and I have a niece now that also isn't a program. She started living with me and going to school here in Urbana three years ago. I am not from Urbana, I'm from the East St. Louis area, and we transplanted here about, when my youngest daughter was in kindergarten. And I remember how much of a struggle it was trying to find after-school care the first five years. We've been involved in Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center since it opened eight years ago. But prior to that, I had to spend a lot of money trying to find someone to take care of three kids after school and not having any extended family here that could support me. It became invaluable when the center opened as a resource for my family. I initially met Ms. Mitchell as the community liaison in the elementary school. My younger daughter was having trouble adjusting and getting into, she was a kindergarten, and getting into some, you know, issues at the middle school. And Ms. Mitchell was very supportive in her, with her and the other teenage, you know, young girls at the school, helping them develop socially and emotionally, even as her, in her role with the school district. But then she continued to provide that support to them when they became, came to the center. So I remember her telling me she was opening the center and suggested that I send my kids there, which I did, and they've been there ever since. As elementary school students, I felt it was really valuable for the homework that they helped that they got after school. In addition, when they went to middle school, she helped them, not only academically, but socially. We know how middle school girls are and high school girls are. And she really helped them to adjust, teaching them social skills, how to deal with emotional issues, conflict resolution. And all those things translate into the school district. It makes a better school when she's helping to deal with the students on that level. Academically, I remember when they were in middle school, she started off just letting them, they were volunteering to help with some of the younger kids. And then as they got older and got more experienced, she started allowing them to, paying them a stipend to help. And then when they got older, she hired them all to work at the center. And so I'm really grateful from that perspective as well. In terms of the work and the employment, they've gotten some real transferable skills that have been really great for them as they, you know, progress through their life from college to just working in other places. My daughter had an internship when she was a senior, which, you know, skills she learned working at the center as well. My oldest daughter is also in college, and she talks about how valuable the center was to her as well. I have my youngest daughter now, who's a senior at the high school, and she's headed to college. And then my niece, when my niece came with me three years ago, she wasn't sure she was gonna be able to go to college, it wasn't on her radar. She didn't think she had the necessary skills, she didn't think she was academically prepared to go to college. But just participating in the College Readiness Program helped to motivate her. It helped to reinforce some of the things I was telling her at school, that you are able to do it at home, that you're able to do it, you know, you just need the right environment and the right support. And the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center provided her that extra support. She had never been on a college campus, so when we went on some of these tours, she was so motivated, and she was so excited. For the first time, she came back, we went to Central State, and was like, that's the college I'm going to. I'd never heard her even mention going to a college. And yet she had gotten so excited and motivated. And since then, she's been participating in the program. Everything from the college visits to the motivational speakers that Ms. Mitchell brings in and just encourages the students, teaches them leadership, motivates them as well. So I can't, you know, tell you how, as everybody else has said, how invaluable of a resource the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center is to the community. I know my family would not, and my kids really benefited from the extra support. There's only so much you can, so much you can do as a parent, and sometimes they get sick of listening to you. So it's nice to have that other voice that's saying, you're reinforcing what you're saying. And that's always been, the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center and staff, that's always provided that support. So I'm grateful for everything that they have done for my family. I say, you know, Ms. Mitchell, you know her passion, her dedication, her love and sincerity towards what she does. And that rubs off, you know, the parents recognize that, the students recognize that, and they respond to that. And so that's why she has such a high success rate, because it comes from a place of genuine, genuineness, and love and caring. And these kids get really motivated, and they're successful as that. So I thank the school board and the school district for all the support you continue to provide. to provide to Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center. I would encourage you to continue to do that in whatever way you can to help, um, Ms. Mitchell fulfill the mission that she's trying to accomplish with the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center and have a, a, a great impact on the lives of the students that go through that program. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you to all the parents and our students. Uh, we also have with us, I just wanna recognize Misty Bell. Misty is actually one of our, uh, mental health clinicians. And, uh, Misty is very, very valuable to the center in terms of helping us provide the, um, social-emotional skill groups. Um, he also has children that attend. And I always like to say, they were our babies before they entered the school district and, uh, they've, they've grown with us. Uh, I do want to make certain that Taylan knows that I do remember. Taylan started with us because of WSET in terms of working. And she was looking for a job placement with WSET. So, after WSET, we hired her on. And, uh, like she said, she was fifteen and, she's sixteen now, but she is a graduating sixteen, because she will be graduating as a junior. Okay. And, and I do wanna notice, Dr. Oyno, Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, um, serves a lot of students during the summer youth employment also. Um, so, that, that has been valuable for us. Um, I would like to, again, just thank everyone, um, who has come out to support, to show their support. Uh, there is one other person that's sitting behind me and most of you know that person. And that is my husband, Danny Mitchell. Danny? And, and we could not do this without, uh, the two of us working together. Uh, we are proud parents of two students that have gone through Urbana School District. And like I tell everyone, you know, what, where you, you place your children, you stay with your kids, you stay on top of your kids, you make the best out of it for your children. And our children have been successful, um, through Urbana School District. So, from the bottom of my heart, thank you to the school board, the school district for allowing us to come in and at least present a side of the community connections as, uh, we talked about in the nineteen, I think it was nineteen ninety-eight equity, where we talked about the need for community supports after the bell ring. And I can truly say, as a member of that committee, that we moved forward to make certain that that happened. Thank you.
You might not wanna run away just yet. Are there questions from the board?
I, I wanna say something that, uh, you do a really great job. But I wanna tell you, every time I go to your board and you, the recognition, I almost cried when you gave out. Janice and her board, they raise money to give those kids, kids scholarships and every child gets a computer. And they were represented by a lot of young ladies. But what touched me, there were a lot of young men too, who are on their way. African-American men, which I'm indebted to for them to go to college. So, I wanna thank all of you for what you do. I hear about it all through the community. And just continue and however I can help, let me know. And board members, you need to go to Don Comes and, uh, to the recognition, because it would just touch your heart. And then the second thing is you talked about African-Americans. The young lady that spoke in both languages is also, she received a scholarship through Janice's program because she went through your program. And she was Hispanic?
Karen.
Yes.
Karen, yes.
Yes. So, she's also got a diverse group coming. So, I needed to acknowledge that. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions. First of all, thank you so much for your dedication to our students and families and, and, and the comprehensive set of services you provide. I mean, you really addressed the whole child, which is, as we all know, is important. But my two questions, one is, there must be a tremendous unmet need out there. I mean, I mean, I imagine you could serve three times the number of students and families. I mean, just hearing just these few testimonies. Do you know that, do you have lots of people on your waiting list that you could serve if you had more space and more resources?
We do have a waiting list. Um, as a matter of fact, I, I was really trying to keep our presentation a little short. But I will tell you, this year, we actually closed our enrollment by the third week of school. Because we had already met our capacity. Uh, there, there, um, we always leave at least, well, a few spots open, because we are located near one of our social service, um, agencies, um, that actually has children. And so, anytime that agency is in need, our, we always have an open door, um, for those students. But like I said, we are serving on a daily basis at our main site, approximately sixty, sixty-five children. And at the IMC site, uh, like Robert said, when he said it was, he likes the space at the IMC. Because for our middle school students who had been with us for, you know, six years or so, it, it was that time to move on and not feel crowded. Um, but we do have approximately twenty students at the IMC. Yes, we do have a waiting list. Um, yes.
So, my other question is, I think what seems really unique is that, um, you know, your staff are in constant communication with students, the teachers of the students you serve, so that you can really be beneficial and extend what they're learning, you know, during their school day, after the school day. And I'm, I'm wondering, does that loop go in the other direction? 'Cause clearly you know, your staff has learned a lot about what your students need to succeed and they're tremendously successful. Does that information flow back to the school so that you learn, for example, what, what contributes to all of your high school seniors graduating on time and going to college, for example? You know, just as one example, does that information get fed back so that, you know, our? Homeschool?
Well, like I said, we, I, I really, not just because of the center, uh, my position in the district, I worked very close with, um, the counselors through the years. Um, I know Mr. Fur is, is gone, is retired now, but, uh, Mr. Fur, Ms. Sova, uh, the counselors would tell you, when I need something, I can email them if they are having questions or concerns about something. So, we do communicate back and forth. Uh, Beth was up here and she talked a little bit about the parents, but she didn't mention, uh, sometimes at nine, ten o'clock at night, my email may be buzzing and that's 'cause Beth is communicating with parents. Um, and, and the parents are communicating. So, we try to make certain that all parties are involved. Like I said, with the school, Mr. Starks, Matt Starks has been at our last, at least two or three, well, since he's been here, our celebrations, uh, for the seniors. Um, Benita mentioned the laptops, every student. Um, we tell parents early on that that is an incentive for participating. Um, they will receive a laptop so when they go off to school. Um, we've kinda started something, which is a five hundred dollar family and friends scholarship fund. That helps them with books if nothing else, because one book could be two hundred dollars. So, um, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Janice. I can attest about the lights being on late at, at your place, because that's one of my routes to get home. And when I'm telling myself, I'm like, two hours past my bedtime and I'm driving by and the lights are on. And I know people are in there, it's like, oh, yes. I need to wrap my head around that. You know? You, you are busy. Like, you've gotta get some rest, please, so you don't burn yourself out. And the other thing I, I wanna ask you is, next time you come, can you bring a plate of whatever you're serving from your kitchen at night? I draw. Apparently, it's awesome. Apparently, it's awesome.
Well, yes. And, and, and you are correct. And hopefully, this helped answer some of your questions, because, um, you know, as, as Dr. Oyno said, it, it makes certain, we are a nonprofit. We are our own 501(c)(3). Um, and although it's an extension of my workday, because these are our students, these are our students from Urbana School District, that we are providing additional supplements to help them in the school day. However, there's work that has to be done. Everybody who's sitting up here can attest, uh, if I have a grant application that's due, it's not something that I'm probably going to work on until probably starting eight, nine o'clock at night. If there's a report that's due following that grant, I'm probably not gonna get to work on it. My husband is the best person who could tell you. It may be three o'clock in the morning, it may be four o'clock. But we get done what we have to get done to make certain the operations continue. Um, yes.
So, Janice, how do you, uh, are do you, are, are you able to coordinate with, like, CU One-to-One and, uh, Reverend Davis's mentoring programs and things? Does that interact with the, with the center?
Um, not on a regular basis, um, not on a regular basis. No, but we do have, um, I mean, for instance, a day, I think we probably had ten university students there. And probably every day of the week, we have, uh, university volunteers and tutors that are at the center. So, we hadn't so much with the, uh, community mentoring. I will tell you though, I've worked with, um, at the high school, Ellinger, um, just with, yeah, to make certain that, um, if, if there's something that's coming up, in particular with the volunteers that she works with, that they could be of help to us. Uh, she's been great with contacting me and working together. Um, yes.
And I'm, um, I've lost the name. There's the, um, African-American men, um, North Fourth Street.
National Council of African-American Men?
Yes. And are, are, is there a tie-in with them?
No.
In terms of role modeling with, uh, some of your, with the, um, male students?
No, no, there's not.
Okay. Just curious. So, you haven't gotten Nathaniel Banks roped into this yet?
Not so, uh, you know, if you really talk individual person, so like, when you throw his name out, I can tell you, yes. Uh, Nate Banks has helped us, uh, numerous occasions. We've actually, uh, at one point, had a couple of the students that were in Mo Better that were actually coming to the center, helping our students. We, right now, I think we have about five or six that we know, the students who are elementary students who are playing on instruments now, who are bringing their instruments to the center. And I know this because we have a separate room for them, um, because they tend to practice every day. Um, I have a piano that was donated by a local attorney who was leaving. Great piano. And we have two students right now, who, elementary students, who are just loving. We had a person coming in who actually works for our district, um, who's helping some of those students on the piano right now. So, yes, individual names I can, but in terms of, you know, an entire organization, no.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine. That's fine. It has been, I, I wanna go back to the comment that you sort of made about the, when you took possession of, uh, that building, I thought, what is Janice doing? And I have been in it and it is, um, you, you've transformed it, uh, in ways that, uh, a lot of us didn't think was possible, uh, into something that's quite useful. So, it's, congratulations. And, and someone back in the back wants to make a comment. Come up and use the mic so the folks at home can, uh, hear you.
I just wanna speak, um, on two things, um, as it relates to the questions. So, um, I am a mental health clinician and, um, counselor here, um, in the Champagne, Urbana area. Um, but I am also a faculty at Parkland College. Um, so, I teach mathematics, um, as well, um, as a couple of other courses, um, at, at Parkland. And one of the things that we offer at Parkland is we try to bridge the gap between the community, um, and particularly the community college here. I can't speak for the U of I, but I can speak to Parkland. Um, and I know that we've tried our best, um, from an admissions standpoint, to try to get, um, partnerships, um, with the local, not, I think, Urbana's been wonderful, but just within the local school districts, period, to try to get information on how we can get, um, them access to applications and FAFSA and deadlines and things like that. Um, and we have been able to really, um, really make headway with working with the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center. I will tell you that Parkland's population, as it relates to out of district, it's, it's out of the roof. We don't get local students to attend college here. Um, and that's something that we really do need to look at. And so, when we brought these statistics to Ms. Mitchell and some of the initiatives that I sit on as faculty at Parkland, she has been able to really help us and bridge, you know, that gap between the local high schools, particularly Urbana 116, and getting them into some of these initiatives. For example, Together We Achieve, which is a specific, um, core group that, um, really tends to the academic success and emotional development of African-American men, um, as well as the mono, some minorities and business initiative, um, degree initiatives. Um, and then on the other hand, we, you talked about some of the mentors. Um, Ms. Mitchell has actually gotten a grant, um, to really focus on the mental stability of our children, which is Hope Challenge. Um, and so, I bring in, you know, um, I know that, you know, some of the mentor programs within the community, they have their own curriculum. Um, but she really focuses on biblical therapy. Um, and we are really teaching our children, women as well as males, to be productive citizens and address them where they are mentally, physically, as well as emotionally. Um, teaching them how to be productive citizens and how to protect certain things and how to deal with officers and, um, of people in authority, whether that be school, community, or law enforcement. Um, and so, that's the reason why we probably don't really bring in a lot of outside mentorship, because we have our own curriculum that we really infuse into our students. Um, and so, that's really what I wanted to kinda speak on, those two questions. Um, but a lot of students that graduate, um, they really do not go on to, um, college here locally. And that's something that, I mean, Champagne, Urbana, I mean, they offer a wealth of post-secondary, um, career plans. And we really need to tap into that. Um, and really partner with our local school districts so that we can, um, get this information out to our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, as I actually bring everything to a close with our presentation, um, I mentioned that we have some board members here. And one of our board members just reminded me of something that I need to extend the invitation, although we were gonna get it, uh, but I am gonna ask Ms. Donna Tanner-Harrell, uh, to come forth. And, um, after Donna presents, um, again, just know that, uh, from the bottom of my heart, I thank the district and the school board for having us. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell.
Good evening. My name is Donna Tanner-Harrell. And I've been on the board for about eighteen months. And I'd like to extend an invitation for you to come out and look at our facility. Janice, I saw it briefly when it had black walls and it looked like mud or tar in the building. It was, it was terrible. But on November the twelfth, it's a Sunday afternoon from two to four, we're gonna have an open house. You can come out, look at our facilities, take a, take a tour and learn a little bit more about the programs, meet some more parents and students, have some treats and bring friends. We're excited about this. I know I'm very excited about the center and we need to introduce the community more to the wonderful programs that Janet and the staff is doing. And so, we'd like for you to come out on November the twelfth, it's a Sunday afternoon. Anytime is a drop-in from two to four. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Is, are we ready to move to the? Thanks, everyone, for, uh, being here tonight. Thank you. We're ready to move to our second study topic this evening, which is board discussion about timeline and priorities for the facilities planning committee recommendations.
So, as I'm getting this set up, I, I would like to, uh, just give a shout-out again to the, all the students that came and presented and the family members that came and presented. As a alumni representative of my alma mater, Carleton College, I often have the pleasure of being at the, uh, East Central Illinois College Fair at Parkland College every fall. And two years ago, uh, there was a group of about twenty students that came out from the Connection Center who were part of the, uh, college preparatory program. And they were so well-researched in the colleges that were there, that I'm just a volunteer, but many of the colleges have paid alumni, not paid alumni, paid, um, recruiters who are there, um, as representatives of the admissions office. And after the night was over, um, a number of the students came over and, and were talking to me as superintendent, not as representative of Carleton College. And, uh, a number of the, uh, representatives from these other colleges came over and said, "How, how do you know those students and, and where are they from?" And I said, "Well, they're, they're actually Urbana students primarily and they're from the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center." And they said, "They knew more than we did about our college." And they said, "They knew more than we did about our colleges." And, um, and that was true. They impressed the heck out of these, uh, students, or, or these, uh, these, um, representatives from these different colleges. And I will say, Mr. Bell has, uh, left the audience now, but, um, these were colleges from all over the country. And it's no surprise that some of these students go all over the country, because they are so well-prepared that they can choose where they're going. And, and it's nice to see summer here at the U of I. But I did run into a young man, um, in the, I should probably be doing two things at once here. I did run into a young man at, uh, Myers at about, um, twelve-thirty at night this summer, when I was out making a quick run for something that one of my children needed. And, um, and this young man stopped me and he's like, he's like, "Dr. Owen, I'm so excited, I'm, I'm leaving today for college." And I said, "What do you mean you're leaving today?" He goes, "We're, we're catching a red-eye flight to DC, and my dad and I are heading off to Howard." And, um, it happened to be Nate King, whose dad came and presented, uh, with his two younger children. Um, and Nate was so excited to see me, to tell me that he had been part of this program and that he was heading off to Howard, um, to study design. And I just, I had to share that moment too, because, um, that, it's, it is about the students, and it is about a community that cares for and values the education of all of its students. Okay, my study topic that I get to do is something that is very familiar to the board and to a couple of our board members, uh, because we, just in the spring, approved the recommendations for the facilities planning committee. I want to remind you of those really quickly, and then basically, I'm going to throw it open to the board members. My goal for tonight is for you to give administration some direction and a timeline for, um, which of these recommendations we tackle and what order we tackle them in. And so, um, just to remind you, we had some general recommendations from this facilities planning committee that are the two elementary schools, Thomas Paine and Wiley, uh, should receive the highest priority to renovate, to add gymnasiums, HVAC, and dedicated fine arts classrooms. Um, and that we would use existing funding sources, uh, to dedicate to those elementary renovations. We did have a discussion at our last board meeting about the timeline for that regarding, um, how to fund those things. And, and Carol Baker presented, uh, some possibilities, but those are things that we definitely have to discuss moving forward in terms of, uh, making sure that we keep our eye on the ball for that. The other recommendation was that current, the current population, uh, supports six elementary schools, and that we are not looking at, um, closing an elementary school anytime soon. And, and we're hopeful that, uh, our population will continue to grow. As, uh, Dr. Bynum reported earlier this year, we had a slight uptick in our, um, in our overall population, uh, but both at elementary and secondary. And then the final general recommendation was seeking a new location for adult education. Central Office should be given priority. And I will say that that, there is an asterisk that I will address with that one later, and that is simply that the funding for that should primarily come from the sale of this current building that we're in. So, here are the large recommendations. Uh, recommendation one, and these are, this is a review. Uh, the Facilities Planning Committee recommends that the Board of Education adopt the Ad-Alternate Proposal for Yankee Ridge Elementary renovation that includes additional classrooms to create a three-strand school to allow for opportunities for growth and flexibility. Recommendation two, that fills, uh, Facilities and Planning Committee recommends that the Board of Education research demographic and enrollment data and long-range financial, um, forecasting with the purpose to determine the possible site and timeline for an elementary school north of I-74. Recommendation three, the Facilities Planning Committee recommends that the Board of Education direct the administration with input and participation from stakeholders to research specialized elementary educational programming possibilities for Wiley Elementary School. Recommendation four is that the Facilities Planning Committee recommend that the Board of Education engage a consultant to prepare a campus land use study of the UMS/UHS campus that specifically addresses the following needs. Uh, traffic flow, inclusion of a possible fieldhouse, um, to be used by both UMS and UHS, outdoor educational opportunities, the possibility of adding enough space for science, technology, engineering, art, and math, lab and classroom space, um, addition of flexible spaces for, um, the STEAM lab. I think that those two are, actually go together. And then other issues raised by, um, stakeholders in the process. And then, final recommendation, um, is that the Board, uh, the Facilities Committee recommends that the Board support, um, the Central Office leadership to explore relocation options for Central Office and adult education, with a few priorities in mind, keeping the, um, facility highly accessible for, to public transportation. Um, and again, as I said, using the proceeds of the sale of the existing building, um, and this property, support long-term replacement solutions. There were a number of other building priorities, uh, that I'm just going to run through really quickly so that the, um, uh, buildings who aren't represented in those, uh, five main recommendations don't feel slighted in any way. They involve science classrooms that, uh, especially at the middle school area, uh, need to be properly equipped with labs. Um, the main entrance, uh, security features at Urbana Middle School specifically, uh, need to be updated. Renovation of science labs at Urbana High School. A construction lab space, that is for, like, a maker space at Urbana High School. Uh, the windows, um, at Urbana Middle School, um, which were not upgraded when Urbana Middle School was renovated in the early two thousands. A review of the updated security camera systems across the district. Uh, playground updates at Lille, uh, was the primary one that, uh, received a, quite a bit of attention. Uh, but there are a number of other elementary schools that need some redesign of, um, of, um, site improvements around their playgrounds. Uh, drop-off and pickup redesign at Lille, uh, specifically around Birch Street. Uh, outdoor classroom spaces at all of our elementaries and middle schools. Uh, flexible learning spaces at elementaries and middle schools. Improved PE and gym, uh, space at the middle school. And then drinking fountains in our elementary gyms. And obviously, we have three elementary schools that we can move forward on that with, as we speak, but we have three that were recently renovated that probably need to, uh, that needs to be reviewed. So, here's where we get to talk about, um, what the Board would like to do in terms of setting its priorities and timeline. Um, first of all, I, I get to say, yay, we have recommendation one already done. The Board acted on that as the Facilities Committee did its work last year. Um, the Board approved Yankee Ridge Ad-alternate, and so we can take that one off the table. Recommendation two is the demographic study related to a possible site north of I-74. Recommendation three, um, is creating a committee to research specialized elementary educational program possibilities for Wiley Elementary School. Uh, recommendation four is engage a consultant to develop a UMS/UHS campus land use study. And recommendation five is explore relocation of CO and Urbana Adult Education. I will say that based on, uh, recommendations from administration, as well as discussion that was, uh, pretty, um, thorough at the Facilities Planning Committee meetings last year, I would recommend that we kind of table recommendation five as a separate entity, because we can move forward with that administratively and kind of take that out of your priorities, because we will continue to have discussions, and we will continue to prioritize, uh, Urbana Adult Education and Central Office. But it doesn't really reflect the other work that we're doing in our buildings. And it, it's also, because it's a dedicated funding source, which is the sale of this building, we can, uh, kind of take that one out of our discussion a little bit. And so our recommendations really are, what order would you like to do recommendations two, three, and four? And I will throw that open for discussion, um, to the board members.
Board members?
Can I, can I just make sure, you, you probably said this at the beginning, Don, but you were even talking too fast for me to absorb it all, but the general recommendations that you laid out at the very beginning were, you know, the two elementary schools, Thomas, Paine, and Wiley. You know, the, are, are we talking about parallel recommendations? I mean, attention to those two schools, Thomas, Paine, and Wiley, will continue pace, you know? As soon as we have the money, those get our top dollars. But you're talking about a parallel set of recommendations. What do we want to be doing in addition, not to delay that, or, you know, to slow that down in any way? This would be additional dollars, okay?
That, that is-
Is that correct in that?
That is correct, and, and just so you, uh, fully understand, the, the three recommendations that, that I'm asking the Board to kind of focus on, recommendation two, three, and four, um, will all involve, uh, some level of expense, but I'm not asking the Board to set out any kind of, um, um-
Well, they're not millions of dollars.
They're not, well, yeah, these, these three recommendations are not millions of dollars. The end result of a few of these might be, but that's outside the scope of the actual work of the recommendation. And so, um, yes, I would say that this general recommendation is something that we will always keep at the front, which is why I put it at the front of this presentation, is that, yes, we are committed, um, to, uh, finishing our six elementary schools, and the two that are left untouched are Thomas, Paine, and Wiley. But that's why, that's why they're up there. Uh, these other three recommendations will not get in the way of that work. So, I, I do like your, um, your term as, as kind of parallel, parallel work, with the understanding that that general recommendation of the two other elementary schools is the highest priority from the, from the, uh, Facilities Planning Committee.
Paul and I had a lot of time to discuss this when we were on the Facilities Committee, so I think both of us are kind of hanging back here a little bit to see if other board members, I'm, I'm sure both of us will jump in when it's time, but we're trying to kind of hold back here and see if other board members have input. So we'll wait a few minutes here, but if you don't speak up, Paul and I are going to jump in.
I guess I just want to ask, um, sorry, was I interrupting?
No.
About the recommendation two and recommendation three.
Don, you want to change the slide so that the three are up there?
Two and three about, um, Wiley's being a specialized school and the school north of I-74. I mean, they're, that's just recommendations, you just want to throw it out there to do what research we need to do, but it's not set in stone that we would absolutely move forward those plans. We just want to put feelers out, right, to see-
I think the idea was to have a demographic study done so that we know, um, what, it's a demographic and also a development kind of strategy to see where the community is, is growing. With the idea of, of potentially land banking a site that might not be developed for fifteen years. Uh, for instance, when I first got on the board, the, the district had purchased another site on Washington Street out closer to, to Walmart. And, um, things changed over the intervening twenty years when they bought it, and so it was no longer needed, so we, we disposed of that land. But, um, the idea is that if we wait until it's already developed, then there's no space left that's big enough to put a school on that's conveniently located. So the idea is to take a look at it. This, this recommendation is to first off do the demographic study to find out, is it thirty years away, or is it ten years away when we might need a seventh school?
And then the same thing with Wiley, I mean, again, that would be a demographic question and not something that you would throw out to the general public first, because you're still putting feelers out, correct?
Well, with Wiley in particular, what was it? When those schools were built, the population density, the homes around that area was much higher than they are today. So those three schools in particular were very close together. And the, there, there are kids from a very large part of, uh, the, the city of Urbana who could actually walk to Wiley. So we were, in some ways, that presents a problem to the district in terms of having to, to bus in kids from all over the town. But in other ways, it could possibly be an opportunity for us. If, if we had a special program that we could really place in Wiley, we might be able to attract kids from a broader area to, who would select that school as their home school. So we're just trying to determine what could we possibly put in that building that would, uh, you know, be, uh, an attractor for that, that kind of, basically, put something special in, in that building that would, uh, attract, uh, people from across the whole town.
Could be a very in-depth STEM program, could be an arts program. Think of, of, um, other, you don't want to use the word magnet school, but, um, it could be something, you know, some kind of special programming that would, maybe it becomes a, um, I, I-
Year-round?
We don't know, yeah, yeah, balanced calendar school? Uh, or maybe it's a, that kind of programming specialty? Or maybe it's a, a different, uh, just a, an academic focus?
I guess the reason why I'm asking is I was thinking about a chicken and egg thing with, I remember you saying a while back, when we were talking about Yankee Ridge, you said, you know, if you build it, they will come. And that a lot of times when you renovate a school, it brings in a new wave of families to move in. So, it, would you look at Wiley, I mean, could, if you built, if you rebuilt Wiley, would that just automatically bring more families into the Wiley neighborhood, which would deplete the need of something in seventy-four or vice versa? You know what I mean? And I don't, and if, if we were just going to buy land north of seventy, I don't, I'm not against any of this stuff, I'm just asking how the timeline works. And the seventy-four property, we wouldn't put caveats on any land that we would think about possibly buying, would we, the way they did across town? Because we don't want to box ourselves in and say, you know, if we buy this, we can only use it for this and only for so many years in the future. Or would we have flexibility so that if things change with demographics or something and we own this land, we could do other things with it or get rid of it if we saw fit to? I just, I'm trying to, like you had said, you know, it could be thirty years from now that we have to worry about it, but I just don't want us to be locked to something that we have no use for in thirty years' time, you know? Those are, those are just what I think about, but I, I mean, I don't know the timelines, because you guys were on the committees and you talked about it in a lot more depth, and those are my only questions.
Well, one of the factors to keep in mind is that when Wiley is redone, uh, Wiley has so much asbestos in it, that it will have to be closed for probably two school years. And so that was part of the decision-making behind the, the Yankee Ridge, is that if something were to happen and we had to close Wiley right now, we wouldn't have a place for all those students-
Right.
-um, in our other, in our remaining schools.
Oh, and I think the Yankee Ridge three-strand thing was, no matter what was going on with Wiley, I think that's a very good idea for that school in general.
So, so that puts, um, that advances the timelines, that, that extends the timeline of, of when you can, when we can work on Wiley. And so that's, that's an issue by itself. The, the, um, the decision across town had a lot to do with how the property was purchased. This district has not made a practice of purchasing for a dedicated, or with the strings attached that were attached to that sale, where the seller actually put some of those strings on, that they had to use it within a certain period of time. When this district has bought land and land-banked it like that, um, I mean, the samples, the examples we have is, uh, prior to eighty-nine, the, the land was bought on Washington Street, I don't know when. But we've been land-banking land around our, our secondary campus as well. And we have, we have bought it and we, without a designated use other than for secondary purposes. But there's no timeframe on it, so we've left houses sit on the land that we bought for a long time. And, and so we're not constrained. The, the short answer is we're not going to, we would not be as constrained.
No, that's, that's what I was hoping. And I mean, and also, when I think about all the puzzle pieces that go in with this kind of stuff, especially with Wiley, if you, if we decided to do something with it to make it specialized, would developing it, removing, well, removing asbestos aside, any development that happens to it, would that be specific to that type of school? Or would it be able to, I mean, so again, that's another thing that we'd have to think about with timelines, that we want to make it a usable school no matter what, if, if something happens that we need to move kids out of it and move kids back in again. But if it were going to be some specialized school, would the classrooms have to be based on that? And not just a generic, you know, elementary school like we, you know, you can move a kid from Yankee Ridge to Lille to King to wherever if they move around town, and they're going to get the same experience, you know, in size of classrooms and shape and, and recreation rooms and everything, but would a specialized school have different needs? needs, I guess, is what I'm trying to ask.
That's why I think, well, that's why these are up here before we talk about construction at Wiley.
Yeah.
Is because we have to decide what we're going to-
Have to decide.
What, what would the, do we want Wiley Elementary to be a, a school just like it is today?
Mm-hmm.
Or do we want it to be a different kind of school? And, that might drive a lot of the design decisions.
Sure. Well, the, yeah, the demographic studies, obviously.
From a demographic viewpoint, Don, what was the number that we came up with? There's about two hundred and eighty students that currently live north of Country Club Road.
I believe it was Perkins Road, but yeah.
Perkins Road, Perkins and Country Club, same.
Yes, that is correct.
Two hundred and eighty K-five students currently live north of Perkins Country Club Road.
And most of those students are bused to several elementaries, one of them being Wiley, but a lot of them are bused to our other elementaries, too.
Yankee Ridge and Thomas Payne and-
Lille.
Lille gets, yeah, almost all of-
Doctor Williams?
Well, none to Doctor Williams, I don't think.
Uh, there's a few.
Oh, dual language, there'd probably be some dual language students that would be bused to, to Williams.
Well, I, I mean, I like the, I like the recommendations-
But this, but this demographic study has to do with, with a district-wide. What, what's the, we had a demographic study done about seven or eight years ago, and it's no longer-
It's almost ten years ago now.
Ten years ago.
And it, and it, I would say that it had a fairly accurate, fairly accurate trend line for the first four or five years, which is about what a demographic study can do accurately. But there are a number of things that change. I mean, that demographic study was done right as the housing market fell. And so, I was actually fairly impressed that it lasted four or five years with accuracy, because they did not predict the housing crisis that happened in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So, you know, that, that is something to be aware of, that yes, a demographic study has a shelf life.
Shelf life. And I'm sorry to monopolize, but one last thing, about the other building priorities. Are those things that we can squeeze in as need arises and as opportunity arises? Like, I was looking at the one about the drinking fountains, and I was thinking about the lead abatement at Lille, and it's like, ooh, somebody, you know, cuts us a deal on putting new drinking fountains in, and we wouldn't have to put them in a list, we could just, if the opportunity arises to get it done, we can do it, we have the discretion to do that, is that right?
Yes, through things like working cash, and, I mean, all of these things, though, do, all of them add up. And, all of them, on some level, will cost money, and so, it is, those are things that we will keep in mind. And, if you remember, one of the things that Oda did, Oda Dossid did, as part of this planning committee work, was he put together kind of a five-year plan of, hey, these are the things that are, are kind of as-you-go, pay-as-you-go projects, that are, some of them were things on that list. Some of them, the drinking fountains in, in the gyms, it really depends, some of them are going to need some architectural and engineering work, because they weren't designed as they were being built. So, some of them will cost quite a bit more money. And, I was worried that you were about to do a spit-take with your-
But that's why they, that's why they were left as a separate list. And that's why they were left as, on a separate list, is because they're kind of a, another one of those parallel tracks.
Right, squeeze them in where we can. Okay, sorry, I'm done. Thank you very much.
And we've talked about everything but four, so probably if Matt Stark were here tonight, he would want to make sure that we talked about a little bit about recommendation four. And he drove that mostly because of the safety issues of students walking through parking lots, and across trafficways, trying to get into the Iowa Street door. I mean, over time, one of the things that's changed since the last time we did a Facilities Committee, and we didn't talk about this, and it just, it hit me, is that students used to be able to walk in any of the doors in the high school in the morning. And now, because of the time and place that we're in, they only go in door number one on Iowa Street. I mean, I remember, not that long ago, kids would park south of the high school and walk in the south, the south door. They'd walk around the field and in the south. I don't remember the door number on that one, but it's, it's the door by the band room.
I believe that's nine.
Nine. And that's, they don't, they're not allowed to do that anymore. And so, what it's done is it's, it's changed the traffic dynamics very significantly on the Iowa Street side, and we have the opportunity in that we now own all of the Iowa Street frontage, and nearly all of the Washington Street frontage that we had intended, laid out years and years ago to, to acquire. So, that's where that, that, that's the main driver behind that. There are other things that were driving it. But, it was safety of the students that was really driving it.
And, John, I just want to add to that, because when my kids were there, I had to get Laura Taylor to come out and put cones out, because you also had car accidents almost going to happen, because one's dropping off, and one's trying to pull up and pull off everybody. And so, it was really, really not safe. So, I think this should still, if it's still doing the same way, I haven't been there on the beginning of mornings of school.
As someone who's there almost every day, it's still pretty bad.
Yeah, I mean, I was one of the ones, almost hit somebody, too. So, no, seriously, it's, it's real bad.
It's bad two times, two times a year for twenty minutes a day, two, uh, two times a year, two times a day.
Are the cones still there?
No, no, but, but-
Right now? Oh. Yeah, Laura did do that. It helped, it helped a little bit, but- So, I think this really should be a priority.
My, my biggest thing is, we have promised Thomas Payne and Wiley for a very long time that they would get the gymnasiums, the HVAC, and the fine arts dedicated classrooms. They are the last two schools on the list. Thomas Payne, we did some mandatory changes there just recently with their parking and pickup. That was a huge safety issue. That was a necessity because of kids' safety. But, I think about all of the rainy days, the snowy days, these kids have nowhere to go, because people are eating in the area. So, they don't have the fancy multipurpose room, gymnasiums, all of these things where they can go and run around, you know, like some of our other schools have, when it's increment weather. And so, I think about that. I think about the fine arts classroom, we are very attuned to the fine arts needs, we feel that as a school board, this, and just school district in general, fine arts are very, very important. But yet, when we don't have the space to give the teachers or the students, that's not fair.
Well, well, none, none of these would take away from that priority. That, that's what we covered.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just sitting here reading this, and I'm like, you know, they're the last two on the list, but yet, if we start talking about doing a study to make a specialized Wiley, that's kind of like, parallel, you know? I could see where that would be important, I'm not, I'm not dismissing that at all. But, I would like to, you know, what is the enrollment you said at Wiley right now? Two hundred and eighty?
Yeah, somewhere.
No, what?
Oh, it was about there, I think it was.
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I believe it's-
We don't know the number, but-
Two sixty-eight.
Yeah, it's two, two seventy, maybe, I think.
Okay. So, you know, I would just be curious to see, and I know, we've always tried to compare Thomas Payne and Wiley, because they are very close proximity, so it's almost like, I, I can't see closing one school, I can't see that at all, and I know we're not even talking about that, but I'm just wondering, if we did this study, and decided to make Wiley a specialty school, I, I don't know, it would be interesting to see what the community thought about that. Because if they're used to a neighborhood school, and their children being able to walk, I know the two schools are close in proximity, but still, there's some very busy roads over there, and with it, it is within the mile and a half. So, how would parents feel about that? Where would these students go? I do live north of seventy-four, and, or, yeah, Perkins, Country Club, whatever. I know those students go to a lot of different schools. I would kind of like to see the numbers, I know, it seemed like we just got some information not that long ago about our sub-districts, when we were talking about the numbers for each school, and the number of students, and I, I don't know, I would like to just see some hard facts on the number of students that are actually out in that area, because I know several areas now.
That's the two eighty. That's the two eighty. There are currently two hundred and eighty students, K-five, living north of Perkins Country Club Road.
That's the two eighty, okay.
That's the two eighty.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's the two eighty.
So, that's the two hundred and eighty, that I was thinking, okay. And, you said Wiley was two sixty-
Two sixty-eight, I mean, that was the number Samuel sent us last week, last, yeah.
All right.
It's around two fifty, isn't it? Two fifty, two sixty in Wiley?
Two sixty-eight.
Two sixty-eight.
It was a sixty enrollment.
So, I just want to be absolutely clear, that the sentiment from the Facilities Committee was unanimous, we need to fulfill our promises to the communities at Thomas Payne and Wiley. Those are absolutely going to be our next major expenditures, no doubt about that.
Right.
What we're dealing with, with the rest of these, is trying to get more information, so we can figure out, after those are done, what should our priorities be? So, except for the-
Number one, which is already done.
No, except for number three, which we need to do to figure out how to plan for the reconstruction of, of Wiley.
And, implementation of number four, when you looked at that in detail, it had all kinds of stuff, like a field house, and, and, you know, pipe dream.
Yeah.
Excuse me, but, but some stuff that, you know, but, well, unless somebody walks in and hands us five million dollars and says, "Build a field house."
Right, it's kind of a necessity right now.
But, well, it's also not eight million dollars. Remember what I said, the primary purpose behind number four was traffic safety at the high school. And it won't cost us eight million dollars to fix the traffic problems at the high school, but if we don't have a comprehensive land use plan about what we're going to do with that campus, we don't want to put a hundred and fifty thousand, pretend, I, there's no, no relevance to this number at all. We, we don't want to put a couple of hundred thousand into safety, traffic improvements, only to have to tear them out five years later, because, oops, we need to build on more steam labs, because that is something that the high school has said, is the current science labs at the, at the middle school apparently really need a lot of work, and the, the, a couple of the labs at the high school are beginning to show their age. And so, how do you, I, I'll use past rather than thinking prologue. It was a great idea to put the health center at the high school. Great idea. It's been very valuable. But, there's no parking, there's no public access to it, it's difficult to get to during the school day, because of where it's located and how the traffic pattern works. We didn't think, when we put it there, about whether that was actually the best spot for it, or whether there might have been a, a better spot. And as a matter of fact, it closed off an opportunity for us to have vocational education at the high school, because we took out the automobile lab, and the welding shop, the auto, one of them, took, we, we took out a shop, and that, used that space for it. And now, we're hearing the high school talk about the fact that, well, on careers, on the education of careers, maybe we need a little bit, we need a three-D lab-
Maker's, maker's space.
Maker's lab, sent, thank you, thank you, I couldn't come up with it. So, it's that kind of, it's that kind of thinking that goes into that high school. It doesn't delay one month work on the other two elementary schools. It won't delay it one month. But it will prepare us so that we spend our money intelligently, and, and, and as strategically as possible. That, and that's really what all two, three, and four are really all about. All three of them are to make sure that we spend our money in the best strategic manner, so that we don't do something and then have to come back later and undo it and redo it.
That's why I'm having a hard time prioritizing, because I think all three of them are sort of essential. I mean, clearly, the discussion around Wiley educational program possibilities will inform the, you know, the renovations of that building, and it may be, Brenda, in my mind, that the outcome of that discussion is that, no, we value neighborhood schools, and it will continue to be a neighborhood school. So, in my mind, this isn't a, how will, what kind of education, new educational school will it be? It will be, do we want to go that route or not? And I, in my mind, there's a strong likelihood that we, we value up neighborhood schools too much to change the route we're going, but it sounds like people would like to have a conversation around that topic, and I think that's probably valuable.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't mean that it wasn't, I just-
Yeah.
You know, it, it's kind of confusing when you're sitting here reading these things, because it's like, okay, these two schools have been on the backwaters for so long, you know, it's like, I just want to get them done.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
It's only fair, you know, I heard it from, gosh, a long time, that we were going to get them done, and it seems like setback after setback after setback, so-
Yeah, they just are the last two.
It's just frustrating.
Yeah, yeah.
It's mostly a money setback.
Yeah.
The district only has so much money to-
Someone had to be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I mean, they just were like, huh.
Yeah, we had to prioritize, so, and they came up on the bottom of the list.
They did, right.
So, that was, you know.
If, if, if we're going to take a stab at prioritizing, so I'm going to throw it out there, because I think we can actually do recommendation three at very little cost, you know, front cost, and I think we need to do that before we can do project planning for the Wiley renovation, so I would recommend doing that earlier. But, love to hear from other people.
And I had, and I had, not that it needs, not that it needs to be delayed much, but that is one task that I thought could be delayed for a year. Because, I, absolutely, because there is no way that we can work on Wiley in the next three years. To be real frank about it, to be real frank about it, and to face the truth, and I can get crucified in the press, and I can get crucified amongst the community. But, to, to close that school with our current facility arrangement in the next three years, and close it for two of those three years in order to rebuild it, is not feasible, because we have too many students. And so, to me, that was something that would be better addressed closer to the construction date, as opposed to doing it now, and then having it fall out of date before we can get to building it. So, and I'm not talking about delaying it out till, you know, way out there, but to me, that was something that could be, could wait a year.
So, you're suggesting maybe a year prior to when the board would have to make a decision on the next elementary school to go?
Yes, yeah. And, I would think that recommendation four, which is the high school campus use, land use plan, is something that will guide us for ten or twelve years or so worth of work at the campus level. But, the safety issues, I don't drop kids off there anymore, but I'm hearing so much about the safety issues, that we really need a solution to the traffic pattern, and, and fixing the traffic pattern at the high school. So, as, as much as I've been a champion for the demographic study, to me, that takes subordinate place to the, to the land use plan around the high school. That, that's my thinking.
That, that makes sense, I mean, you, and Paul, because you were on the Facilities Committee, and maybe those of you who attended the meetings, I did not, you have the benefit of having heard a lot of detail behind all of these recommendations, and so I, your, your explanation and argument for moving ahead on four makes sense to me, and listening to the timeline for Wiley- And, listening to the timeline for Wiley, being possibly three years out, because you're assuming Thomas Payne will happen next, and then Wiley.
Well, no, I'm, I don't think we have any money to do either of those two schools for at least two years.
Two years, okay. But do we, two or three, okay.
Two or three years before we can do work. Carol, if you came up with something better, please correct me, but...
I think it depends, too, on how Yankee Ridge comes out in the budget. I mean, it's, things are going well, right now. So, if things end up that way over the next year, we might have better news, because then we'll have some additional money.
But, but coming up with the next six to eight million dollars.
I'm just saying, we might get an extra one or two if Yankee Ridge goes well. We'll see. So, we also sold the bonds for a little bit more, too.
Yeah, so, optimistically, maybe we'd start in two years, but it, but realistically, it could be three years. So, so waiting to have the discussion about Wiley for another year, in light of that, that makes sense to me.
But now, having the discussion about Wiley is separate from doing a demographic study on it, right? Isn't that what you were saying, Paul, that you, we could do it?
No, the demographic study is not for Wiley. The, the study for Wiley is determined if the city of Urbana would like to place a special program there that would be offered citywide. The demographic study was, is kind of a longer term plan to determine if, and where we would potentially build a seventh elementary school on the north side of town.
So, could we do any studies concurrent with, before we do, you know, I mean, just to get, get feelers out about what we want to do with the space at Wiley? I mean, that doesn't cost as much, right?
And keep in mind that it, you cannot wait until you need the seventh school sometimes to buy the land, because by then, you're going to be so far out in order to isolate the ten acres necessary, fifteen acres necessary to build a school on. You'll be so far out of town that it won't be. But, it could be the demographic study will say, you know, it's beyond thirty years, you, you're going to be fine. And then, you don't, then you, then there's no point in doing anything.
But, in terms of specifically the Wiley study, the, there isn't a huge impetus to make that decision quickly. So, we, we might as well wait a little bit until we have more information, until we can get parent groups with, with kids who will be in the building. We might want to take into account the fact that the evidence-based funding model has pluses for having smaller class sizes. Maybe we'll want to build out for that. So, giving it, I think, an extra year to, to bake, you know, probably, and getting a better recommendation out of it.
I'm assuming that the administration has put this in front of us, because they don't feel they can do two, three, and four simultaneously.
That is correct. And, and I really appreciate the conversation about the importance of not trying to jump on all three of these at once, because especially, I mean, I, I agreed with the first comment, that number three is going to be cheap. And so, why not do that first? But, I, I was hoping, and I was pleased to hear the, the conversation, that if we do that one first, that, that recommendation, that work that that committee does could sit for a number of years, and then be outdated, based on what the needs and wants of the community are. And so, I do think that pushing number three back makes a lot of sense, even though it's, it's probably the cheapest of those three recommendations that were discussed. But, but it does make the most sense to, to hold off on that one.
On the, that current student count north of Perkins Road, the two eighty, is that for all buildings, meaning the high school and the middle school?
No, that's K five.
That's only K through five? Okay.
So, it does not count three and four-year-olds who attend early childhood, and it does not count any six through twelve students.
And, in two, three, four years, there's going to be students that cycle in and cycle out?
Which would be the need for a demographic study, to, to give us a, a little bit of a, a projection.
Right, well, I've been around...
When we looked at it, when we looked at it ten years ago, it was around three hundred, so that number's been relatively consistent.
Because we've been kicking this can around for a lot of years, a lot of years. Because I've been around for a lot of years. About the A school north of seventy-four. And, to me, the Wiley element and the, this, the North School are so intertwined, in, in my mind, anyway, in the way that we have to think. Because if we go with Wiley, get all the renovations done, so on and so forth, and then turn it into a specialized elementary, we're kind of taking it offline as being a, a regular school where some, you know, that children aren't going to be going to. And then, we're going to have to have the space to put those children in. And if we have a huge population that will only need to be, that will be split down pretty well, because, depending upon what area we might land bank, and if we put in a school north of seventy-four, there will be wa, more, biggest part, a, a big part of the population is going to be a walk-in. They won't be on the buses anymore, going to the other schools. Another section is going to have to be bused, because they will be going across very tre, treacherous, like forty-five, to get to school. So, we're still busing, but a shorter distance. And all these little itty-bitty type of factors have to be looked at. And because, and because I'm thinking, if we take Wiley out of, out of the picture, because it's going to be specialized, those children are going to be coming in from just wherever they need to come in from. But we're def, definitely have a, have to have a place for, you know, the rest of them to go. And, our other, our other point of it, is I have to bring it up, is when we have redone our boundary lines for each of our schools, our attendance areas, we have been very, very, very close in, in just pinching the numbers on the socio-economical part of it. And that's going to come up. And we need to make sure that something north of seventy-four is going to be integrated almost perfectly to the way that we have tried to do that. Or are we pulling that out of the other schools? There's a reason why certain areas do get a certain school as their attendance area. Because we, I've sat on these committees for years now, and we want to have a wonderful balance of everybody in every school. And it's, and it's going to have to be the same thing. That's what's going to have to be looked at as well.
And the population north of seventy-four is, is mixed, it's eclectic.
Yeah, because we've always known it has been, and that's how it filters so well, as being like the rural students, and where they all have to, have to go, and into which attendance school. So, to me...
And we say north of seventy-four, we really should say north of Country Club Road, because
Oh, true, yeah.
There is a difference in how you, and how the, how the, how the demographics fall out.
True, that's true. But, to me, they, they, for years and years and years, because Wiley keeps coming up all the time, and Wiley continues to be in the back of some people's mind that it's been central office in the past, could very well not even go through a great big huge renovation and become central office. But now, some people don't have that idea, but it might be the easier way to do something. And we just have to really think, you know, openly and honestly about what we want to do.
Just one...
Because I, it seems like it's so limited on where a new central office and adult ed could be located, and it might not be centrally.
The, no, the, the Facilities Committee, anyway, had clear recommendations with regards to the placement of central office, and that was somewhere, basically, near downtown. So, that would, if, if, if the board decided to follow the committee's recommendation, there's no way it would go to Wiley. Absolutely not.
Well, I, I get it.
It's not downtown, but MTD goes to Wiley.
Yeah, but not...
Not, not like they do downtown. Yeah, I mean, with our adult ed. If, if, if central office, when central office was at Wiley, it was just central office. It wasn't adult ed, together with central office. Adult ed at that time was housed in the, in the high school, to be honest about it, at night. And, so, the, the committee, Facilities Committee, after a lot of discussion, made its, and it was in the recommendations to, to the board, is that adult ed would stay co-located with central office. And so, that dictated that central office would be downtown. Or, in the larger perspective of downtown.
Near, near the, the MTD transit hub.
So, take where we are and go out about,
Where's that property?
Go out about four blocks and five blocks, and draw a circle, and it would be inside that space. Which would exclude Wiley. The, the other, the, the piece, and, and I'm going to sound like a broken saw, but Wiley, many, many past discussions about Wiley have focused on Wiley as perhaps being a school to close, like you're talking about. But in actuality, Wiley is also a significant asset to the district, where it's located, because people can walk there from all of the Lille walk-in attendance area, all of the Yankee Ridge walk-in attendance area, nearly all of the Thomas Payne walk-in attendance area, and nearly all of Dr. Williams' walk-in attendance area can walk to Wiley. And so, if we have a program there that is different than the other five or six buildings, it, when we tried to talk about a balanced calendar school, it was brought up, it was, Lille is what was brought up. And the Lille community did not want to be forced into a balanced calendar school. So, for instance, let's using that as an example. So, if Wiley's balanced calendar, people can walk into Wiley if they choose balanced calendar. If they don't want balanced calendar, they can walk to any of the other schools without us incurring transportation, forcing anybody to get on a bus when they can walk. If it's a special academic program, the school district that I went to high school in has an elementary school that is an international baccalaureate elementary school as well as, and, and that's a, a different kind of a program with, and that might be an option. Well, that's only going to appeal to a certain number of people. Our dual language, if, if Wiley is, 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 becomes an in-depth dual-language program, people can walk into it, and people can choose, and a lot of people may choose not to be part of that program. That, that's, that was the thought behind Wiley, is it's an asset that we should, we should leverage and take advantage of, and do something that we've not been able to do, because to do it in any of our other elementary buildings, it forces people to attend a special program that they may not want to, or forces us to transport people to a different place. And, and so, that was the, it has, it, it actually doesn't have, it's actually trying to leverage the asset that Wiley is. Don's looking for guidance. Don, are you wanting these in one, two, three, ar, order?
That would be my preference.
I think we're kind of...
I think I have a three.
Two, three, and four, we're kind of, one, two, we need a one, two, three out of those.
And I think three is three, from what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I, I'm with you, John, with regards to number, number four. Anything we want to do, even small, at the high school, will be blocked, until we get, until we get that done.
That would make four number one, three number three, and two would be number two. Now, we need reactions from other board members and thoughts from other board members. What do you think of that? And once again, keeping in mind that this does not delay one, doesn't delay our work on the final two elementary buildings.
Well, I'm all for safety first. That's, that's where I've been since all my time at Prairie, basically, in the safety committee, and everything that I've just grown to love is safety first, safety first.
Yep, I'm fine with that order.
Brenda, you look troubled.
Yeah, I would just like to, so this would include the middle school also? We've talked a lot about the high school, but this would also include the middle school?
Yes, secondary campus.
All right.
It's just our super block.
All right.
The firm we used before, not predicting any kind of a firm, but was out of Chicago, that the University of Illinois uses for all their, when they do a, a little land use study.
I remember we used Cambridge one time.
J, J R, but I think they're part of it, a dip, bigger firm now. You know, but it would not be our local architecture firm. This, this is, this is getting a specialist in that looks at land. And it could be them, it could be somebody else. Don, I think, no, we don't need a vote. He just needed a sense of the, of the board.
I just needed a sense of the board, and I think I, I don't want to put words in the mouth, but I, I'm looking at my watch, and I know the board's looking at their watches. I think I'm hearing that we start with recommendation number four. We start working on an RFP for that, that we bring back to the board, hopefully later this fall, for putting out as an RFP. And then, that way, that starts that work. After we've gotten that work underway, then we could start looking at number two, put an RFP out for a demographic study. And then, when those things have been accomplished, that's when we start talking about a committee to discuss.
You can check and see, I don't think there's formal bidding requirements, so it's, your request for proposal is the right language.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's an RFP.
Because you're obtaining professional services, so it does not go to the lowest bidder.
Right, but I do think, I do think that we would want to go through a formal process of asking for requests for proposals, so that we get a good sense of who is coming in. And you're right, it would not...
And then, we interview.
Right, we interview them. We could have them give presentations about the kind of work they've done, and, but yes. I agree. I, I think, unless there are other...
Board members okay with that? Are we ready to move forward?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good discussion.
No, thank you. I just asked the question.
We have no call for future special executive meetings, superintendent's report?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Speaking of safety of students, Dr. King Elementary School has initiated some new drop-off and pickup procedures this week, and we appreciate the support of the families, and as well as our, our local partners and Urbana Police coming out and helping out with some traffic things. They're still ironing out the details, but it was really about making sure that our students are safe. We've moved the buses down to the south side of the building on Fairview, and use that lane as a drop-off and pickup for cars. Because the, the traffic patterns at that north end of the school, near what would be called the north entrance, were getting a little, a little dicey in the mornings with the buses and the, and the cars coming in and out of the north parking lot. So, we're still tweaking that a little bit, but we appreciate the support of the, it was kind of an all-hands-on-deck for the King staff the last couple of days, and will continue to be until we make sure we get all the, all the parts ironed out for that. In addition, I'd like to give a shout-out to two of our staff members, Brian Lake, who's an instructional coach, and Jamie Spencer Tanner, who's an early childhood teacher, who both were recognized as part of the forty-under-forty group for the News Gazette. Their banquet was last week, and we might be bringing them up for a little bit more formal recognition at some point later on, but I did want to give them a quick shout-out. Also, give a shout-out to all of our, I'm sorry. I can't reading, I'm not, having a hard time reading my own handwriting here. Give a shout-out to all of our principals. October is Principal Appreciation Month, and so, I will be putting out something later on this week with the hashtag #ThankAPrincipal. And so, if any of the board members would like to thank a principal, I encourage you to give them a call, drop by their building, or shoot them an email. And, we will be... or shoot them an email. And we will be doing a little campaign to thank them and show our appreciation to our principals this, this month, during the month of October. I also appreciate the support of the board in our love public education efforts. And we do still have T-shirts for sale. I've also been getting requests from other superintendents, so I will, there they are. Mr. Dimmitt is holding his up. And, and that goes right along with our, the work that we're doing that I will be having a report on at a later board meeting about our racial equity work that continues. And we're combining that with our restorative practices work and having a lot of success in reviewing some of the concepts that we talked about last year with racial equity. You heard a lot of presentations from students and family members about the importance of preparing all of our students and putting things in place for all of our students, but especially our African-American students in terms of being college-ready at a earlier presentation this evening. And that is my segue into also saying that we're kicking off our Champagne County Charitable Campaign this month. So the month of October is our Champagne County Charitable Campaign. I'm happy to say that in the last three years, we've increased our percentage of participation by our staff every year for the last three years, both in terms of the number of dollars donated to local charities, but also in our percentage of participants. And so I'm gonna be sending out an email shortly, kind of setting that bar high again. And the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, I probably shouldn't be giving this kind of a public service announcement, but because they were here, they are a 501(c)(3) that benefit from the Champagne County Charitable Campaign. And the work that Ms. Mitchell and, and her staff does is all about the charitable giving that is done by this community. And so I would like to thank the entire community, but especially our, our staff here who have been giving back either through payroll deduction or through writing out a check to the Champagne County Charitable Campaign that is run by United Way. Got it. So, yeah, the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, for every student that they serve, and you heard that they have sixty-six students at their main location and twenty-five at their others, it takes two hundred dollars per year in charitable donations to support a student there. So appreciate that. And I'm done with my superintendent's report. Oh, yes, thank you. I haven't, I haven't checked the weather yet. Tomorrow is Walk to School Day, and so it is rain?
It is rain, actually, yeah.
Well, then it will be a wet Walk to School Day. I know some of our principals are working on backup dates, but I also know that some of them, we understand that students walk to school, rain or shine. And so we are celebrating Walk to School tomorrow. And it might be postponed in some of our buildings.
Okay, board reports.
I, I just wanted to mention, I was able to go to the very fine Mexican restaurant on Philo and Washington where we held the middle school bilingual fundraiser for dinner tonight. And boy, when I got there, it was packed. When I left there, it was packed. And everyone was carrying their sheets, so you knew they were coming in for the fifty percent, you know, thank you to that restaurateur who gave fifty percent of the proceeds that, to the Urbana Middle School bilingual program.
They, they set the bar high.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the, a lot of the donations from those kinds of things are run in the range of twenty to thirty percent.
Yeah.
Arachi says, Stinkas giving us fifty percent of their, of their take tonight is, is great.
It's, yeah, it's great food and a great cause, so thank you.
Other board reports.
Uh, yeah, the dinner meeting. Dinner meeting in Mohammed was really good. They had a panel of superintendents and our former superintendent, Dr. Williams, was there. And it was very informative. They talked a lot about some things that superintendents need from their boards to be able to work well and communicate effectively to run a good district. And it, it was overall a really good meeting. No. It was at Mohammed Seymour. And it was, it was interesting to see some of the things that they have done with their sales tax money, such as their improvements to the auditorium, which we were in, the field house, which some of us had never seen before, gymnasium.
And their library.
And the library, yes. So it was a good, a good trip.
It was also good to hear them talk about what has happened in Springfield, what legislation has passed or hasn't passed and how things are going with the school funding. That was informative.
And our, yeah, and our Brenda Carter got an award again this year.
Master board member.
Master board member.
Congratulations.
I'm getting there.
Okay, other board reports. I just, next Tuesday night will be Randy Blackman's final home soccer game that he'll be the head coach for. Thirty years of coaching, the winningest program in the school district in the last forty years or fifty years, and the winningest coach. So if you're interested, come out and enjoy watching Randy probably have a fit on the sideline if they fall behind. So they are still rated number one. All right, motion to adjourn would be in order. Moved in second at all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion is carried. We're adjourned.